Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Board Work Session for Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. We'll go ahead and jump right into the agenda. The first topic that we have for this evening is the Westchester Power Community Choice Aggregation, IMA, and we have a presentation by the Sustainability Advisory Board Chair, Steve Walk. Do we have Steve?
I don't see him.
See him either.
He was definitely on.
He was here.
I have his email. I'll email him.
Whoops. I think he sent me a text saying I'm on at 6:15. I said, yes. Close it to that.
Okay. So Bailey Farms is a little bit longer, so I don't I don't want to skip to that, but Jill, maybe we could cover Wall Street rides?
Sure. This is a bicycle ride that has minimal contact with the town. It passes, it briefly passes through Newcastle on the east side of town. The race is in October and unlike other bicycle events that come through town that are have significant impacts, namely to our train station or to Gagney Park. This one traditionally comes through. We don't even notice it and we'd like to be able to allow them to come through town again. So with the board's permission. Okay. The next is authorization to approve the revised resolution for the additional driving movie. Unfortunately, my math was not what it should have been. So I, we're going to ask for revised resolution. The $4,500 $100 cap for the event wasn't sufficient. I'm going to ask you to move it up to 48. It's actually 46 and change. And Lisa, you're in the midst of trying to work out a movie with Ike. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the, for that October 4th date. Fourth? That we're still working on.
Fourth, I think, right?
Third. It's the Saturday.
And it's not just me. It's the CRE Events Committee is doing that, but I'm just kind of being the go-between.
Okay. Yeah, I only see you on the emails. It is October 3rd, you're right. So Saturday, October 30th is our target date at this point. For that fourth meeting. And Steve is back. Terrific. Okay, Carrie, if you can hear us, Steve is back on the line.
Yep.
Oh, there he is. Hi, Steve.
Hello.
Okay, so we have Steve Walk with us, the SAB Chair, who's going to talk to us about the IMA for Westchester Power.
Great, thanks. So I'm going to try to share a screen with you if that's all right. And can you see that?
Yep.
Great. I'll jump right into it and, you know, feel free to just ask questions as we go along. There aren't that many slides, so why we're here. So now we need to decide if we want to remain a part of Westchester Power, the Community Choice Aggregation Consortium. We did join in 2016. There was an auction to provide supply, electricity supply for the communities that did join. And an ESCO, Emergency Service, sorry, Energy Service Company was selected and they were the ones that had passed all the qualifications and had the lowest price for green and brown, meaning not renewable energy. The contract expires at the end of this year and the consortium needs commitments from municipalities before a new auction begins. The more municipalities that are in, the more residents are in and presumably the lower the cost will be. Because of economies of scale. Just to kind of level set a little bit as a reminder, electric costs are based on supply and distribution. We have no choice about distribution. That's ConEd. North of us, it's NISEG. But we do have a choice about where we get our supply. So supply can be provided by ConEd or an ESCO. So, you know, most people, if without community choice aggregation are defaulted into ConEd. And that's just what the government does. And they can select a third party. Or by joining the consortium, we can also team up with about 120,000 other residents and in Westchester County and and choose an ESCO in that way by the lowest bidder. So also importantly, supply costs can be variable and some ESCOs do allow a fixed price. So with variable, the rate is going to move up and down primarily based on the price of natural gas and demand. So, you know, particularly warm and humid days, the price will move up in places where people have a lot of electric heat, you know, then natural gas is being used and you know, for a lot of reasons and if it's very cold. And then the price again will go up. So that's how it works. This diagram kind of shows a little bit of it. The supply that goes into our network is going to come from a variety of places. Indian Point is going away in April, so half of it is gone already. Half of it is going to, the other half is going to go away in April of 2021. And we'll be left with natural gas, hydro, solar and wind. And of course, our goal is to try to reduce as much natural gas as possible and increase wind, solar and hydro. And that's doable. And New York State has a plan for that. So the question is, you know, do we pass resolution authorizing signing of a memorandum of understanding? And that memorandum of understanding, essentially what it comes down to is that if the price in the auction for, it's really a reverse auction, so the lowest price wins. But if the price in the auction for the ESCOs is lower than 7.65 cents for both residential and commercial, then we commit to signing an energy services agree, a service agreement and committing residents and our commercial who are currently either on ConEd or on Westchester Power to this new contract. So what exactly does that mean? It locks you in for two years to green. However, and when I say locks, it's locks town to do, into doing this, but any individual can opt out at any time at no cost. And it's very easy to opt out. It's an 800 number. I think you can do it on our website as well. There is messaging that is sent out by the ESCO and perhaps Westchester Power. Also, you know, the town with the SAB can send out messaging, you know, snail mail. We can put messages in the newsletter and, you know, other places to make sure that people know that they do have a choice.
Steve, can I interrupt you for just one second?
Yeah, please.
Just with regard to the first bullet here, I'm just a little bit confused. Aren't all Newcastle residents who have not opted out current consortium customers?
Not necessarily. The residents who would not be are those who came after the consortium was formed and after we started it. They would have gone, many of them would have gone right to ConEd. And also, if anyone had been in ESCO when the consortium was originally formed in 2016, they could not be pulled out of their ESCO because they might be under contracts. And if they were under contracts, they could potentially, you know, have to pay penalties to get out.
So then there are some customers in town who would, should we authorize the MOU and end up ultimately moving forward? There are some customers in town who would be switching. This wouldn't just simply maintain the status quo for everyone.
That's, that's correct.
What about people who opted out before? Would they need to opt out again?
They will need to opt out again.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And we'll have to be really clear. This is a great question. And we'll have to be really clear about that and make sure that people are messaged about that. You know, I do anticipate, you know, just based because on the fact that, you know, I was here in 2016, we will have some people, many people will see it and a few will opt out and some will say, this is great. There will be some number after a month who will say, you know, what just happened? And that's the nature of it because some, for whatever reason, they won't see everything. But they can opt out then. So
I just feel like that's a little bit frustrating. I wonder if we could push Westchester Power on that point? Because it feels to me like if you opted out before, you're not going to suddenly want in now. Or if you are, you should affirmatively want in. I just, I feel like to make people who opted out have to opt out again is a little, I don't know, it feels a little funky to me. I just wonder if there's a way for Westchester Power to get that list of who's opted out at this moment and just carry that forward.
Yeah, that, or at least if we could be notified as to who those people are so that we could at least reach out to them independently and just let them know about this inconvenience. Because they have already taken those affirmative steps. So it seems like they're getting hit twice.
Yeah, let me find out about that. I don't know the answer. I suspect it's going to be challenging because it's part of the contract with the ESCO. But, but I'll find out more and then I'll let you know. But however, and I understand what you're saying, however it works though, I think for every resident in town, we need to be very clear. So I mean, I, my suggestion would be that if we decide to go forward with this, you know, we don't rely only on what Westchester Power sends, but we do a lot of our own communication. And it truly isn't difficult to opt out. I mean, it really is quite easy and people have opted out. Most people who opted out, opted out in the beginning. Not many people have. I think we're still over like 90% of people in Westchester Power. But most people opted out at the beginning and then there were a couple of months, I don't know, about a year or so ago, where a few people opted out and then, but you know, that's, that's about it. So, well, this really kind of goes to your question. You know, what happens if the town doesn't sign the MOU? Or, well, if we don't, sorry. Then people will, everybody will switch back to ConEd. The people are under Westchester Power. So that will be a switch for them. So they'll go from fixed rate to a variable rate. In some cases, that may be good, but it depends again on where that variable rate goes. They will not have green energy. ConEd does not offer a green energy option. So they will be able to select their own ESCO. And there are probably good ESCOs out there, but it's, you know, people do need to be careful. There are ESCOs that are probably, you know, what, one would say, you know, you just need to understand what you're getting into. There are rates that might start inexpensively and then go up. And if people don't watch their bills, then, and I've heard many stories around this. So if there is a fixed rate, like with Westchester Power, then you don't need to watch your bill. You know exactly what it's going to be for now, you know, until two years from now. To give you some sense of who joined last time, so there are 27 municipalities in Westchester County. Newcastle was the first municipality to select green as the default. After that, many municipalities asked us, what do we do? How do we get that done? And they followed our example and now there are 24 that chose green as the default. So it's a pretty big deal. And to that point, you know, between, with the entire program, which is both ConEd and NISEG territory, avoided the emissions of 670, over 670,000 tons of CO2. So there, you know, of all the things the SAB has done and other towns have done, there is nothing that has the impact that this has. I mean, it's a really big, if we care about climate change, you know, we can pat ourselves on the back, you know, the town collectively. Because, you know, this, this really made a difference. Newcastle by itself avoided 68,000 tons. So as great as an environmental success was, you know, from a financial perspective, it wasn't quite the same. So it started out doing well and since about 2019, ConEd's rates have gone down significantly. As I mentioned, a Westchester Power rates are, are fixed. So, you know, when, when, of course, ConEd's rates go up and past our fixed rate, then, you know, we're in the money. When they go down below our fixed rate, we're not. So to give some sense of what the rates are, and I think the rates are actually about the same right now as I checked on August 26th. So the Westchester Power rate remains at, you know, .07959. It's almost eight cents a kilowatt hour. ConEd's rate is about .0603. So it's significantly less. Now that's for brown. And there may be some tariffs that need to be included in there, but you know, no matter what, it's significantly less than the Westchester Power rate. Now, that's not the main impact on most people's bills. Much of it is transmission, which is what ConEd is going to charge you no matter where you get your supply. Nevertheless, if you use a lot of electricity or, you know, that it's going to, it does have an impact. So at something like 1,000 kilowatt hours a month, you'd be paying a premium right now of approximately $19.65. Just to give you a sense of where rates have been, ConEd rates, that orange line that goes horizontally across, that is our fixed rate. And whenever the ConEd rates, of course, have gone above, you know, like at some point it was over 10 cents kilowatt hour. Everybody was cheering us and telling us how great we were. When it goes down like this, then we're not so great anymore because ConEd is, is costing less per kilowatt hour. But again, as you can see, the things, they do move up and down and there is an expectation that as you know, Indian Point goes away, that people are going to see higher electric rates. And, you know, this could also be a function of how the economy does and a variety of other variables. If it does go up and we have a good fixed rate, then, you know, everybody looks good. Of course, if it, it could go down more. So there's no way to know that. And I think it really depends on each person's risk tolerance. So as, as we looked at the pros and cons, you know, we, the Sustainability Advisory Board, we do recommend signing up with Westchester Power again. And, and yes, it may cost residents and businesses more if they stay with it. But here's the reasons. Of course, it avoids tens of thousands of tons of CO2. I mean, we saw how much Newcastle alone avoided like 65,000 tons. What we do is we signal the state, national and global markets that consumers want green. That's a really big deal because those folks who are developing new power plants, they have to make decisions. Do we go with natural gas? And that's something that can last 30, 40, 50, 60, 70, 80 years. Or do we go green? And, and maybe we're spending a little bit more money, but people are willing to pay a little bit more. So the more power producers go green, you know, the more devices and people who are, know how to fix them and things like that are made. There's economies of scale. The price actually for green will come down. We signal other municipalities that, that were committed and we were a leader last time. So we're going to signal them one way or the other, whether we're committed or not. And we potentially could save money. Again, the price is fixed and we don't know where the price is going to go. We do support Westchester, sustainable Westchester initiatives. And then really importantly, by signing on, we give Newcastle residents and businesses a choice. If we don't do this, as I mentioned, they're going to go back to ConEd and they can get a third-party ESCO they want, but they cannot join the consortium. By doing this, they can opt out and they can still go back to ConEd. They can get brown electricity. They get, that's their choice. They can get a third party. But they would not be able to join the consortium. By doing this, we at least give them the choice. So that concludes the presentation. And if you have any other questions, happy to try to respond.
Hey, Steve, do we know how Westchester Power's consortium's pricing, fixed pricing compared to other ESCOs that provide green energy?
The, it's a little bit difficult to answer. We have seen some fixed prices, but it's not an apples-to-apples comparison because they're usually for a smaller time range, so like for a year. We have seen, there's one in particular that we've seen that is lower than 7.65 cents. But 7.65 cents is the maximum. And so it's difficult to respond because this will be an auction. There are multiple players that are going to try to win this bid. And I would be very surprised if the end price came out to 7.65 cents. Do I think it'll be in the sixes? I can't know. You know, I think that would be great. But, but it, you know, it depends how competitive. There'll be multiple rounds of bidding and you know, it really depends on, you know, who's there and how well they're competing.
Thank you.
Steve, do you know, is there a threshold at which, you know, if we have folks opting out? I'm just, I'm curious if there's a saturation point or a threshold at which the number of residents in the town who have opted out make it such that, you know, those who are still in are being charged a higher rate? Or if it at any point, you know, exempts the municipality for, from continuing to be eligible for the program?
Yeah, to my knowledge, well, one, there is no way that we can be charged a higher rate. When we sign up for the rate that they bid in the auction, that's the rate that we get. We cannot be charged higher. You know, no matter how many people opt out. So you know, and that's, you know, part of their risk, the ESCO's risk analysis when they, when they bid also. And sorry, I forgot your second question. Or maybe I answered it.
Just, just if, if there's ever a point at which they say, you know, if 60% of Newcastle residents have decided to opt out, are we as a municipality ever, at any point, no longer eligible?
Oh, no, no, nothing like that. Because there are many municipalities that are going to be in this. So, you know, it'd probably be 27, 28 municipalities that are part of it. So there will be thousands of households, you know, that are part of this. So we'll, you know, we're, you know, just one part of, you know, I suppose if 90% of Westchester dropped out, that would probably be problematic, although I don't even think there's anything like that in the Energy Service Agreement. I don't know if Nick's listening, if he saw anything like that, but I did not.
No, Steve, you're right. There is no way for him to back out once we have the contract with him due to a lack of enrollment or people dropping out.
So I can see that we've had some questions come in over the chat. I actually want to give anybody who's in the audience and participating, if you, if you want to take advantage of the fact that we have Steve with us on the call tonight to ask a question. If you could just raise your hand and Carrie will, will bring you into the meeting so that you could ask questions directly.
Okay, Nicole Reese, I'm going to open your line. Just unmute yourself.
Sorry. Yeah, I don't recall opting out, but I've been getting my green energy from Green Mountain Energy in Vermont for years and years and years. And I would join the consortium if the prices were cheaper than Green Mountain. Right now, well, in June, I paid 7.6 kilowatt hour. And then the other, then I have a question. Well, I'm wondering about that, but I have a question about why Con Edison charges so much more for transmission for green energy than if you were to buy your energy from ConEd? I mean, significantly more.
Yep. If I can, I'll take the second question first. ConEd has to charge the same amount for their distribution for whether it's green or brown. They, by law, they cannot charge more. So they do charge a lot. And, and, you know, if we were about, you know, five miles north, then we'd be in NISEG territory and we'd be paying less. So, so yeah, our, our distribution is pretty expensive, but it is by law the same for green or brown. Regarding
Is that, excuse me, but is that a change? Because I was comparing it with my bill with my neighbor's bill.
No, it's not. Because really what they're doing is they're, they're, they've got pipes that send electrons to your home and they really have no idea whether they're coming from green or brown or nuclear. So no. So what you, you know, generally the, the, oh, not generally, the, the only price difference that you should see if you compare your bill is if, if you might have seen, if they're part of ConEd or they're getting their supply from ConEd. ConEd does have a variable cost and their costs are actually quite low right now. So that could be the difference, whereas you're paying 7.6 something for your supply from Green Mountain Energy. So your price may be higher for that reason. Also
Transmission per se is the, it's not the transmission that's more expensive. It's, it's the actual cost of the
The kilowatt hours.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's, that's right. Yeah. So which, you know, I call supply. But yeah, the kilowatt hours are, you know, that's, that's where they can charge or, or, you know, one place can charge more than the other.
Right.
Now, as I mentioned, ConEd, their prices will move up and down. They could be six cents today. They could theoretically be 10 cents tomorrow or next month or all of next month or all of next year. You know, depending on, on what they are charged. They don't make money off of their supply, but they don't try to save you money either. They just pass it along for whatever they, they get it for. And they're not always the cheapest. So with respect to Green Mountain, you know, you're getting yours from Green Mountain Energy first. I think it's great that you're getting green. So congratulations on that. It's possible that when the consortium started, you were with Green Mountain Energy or some other ESCO. And in that case, you would not have automatically been moved into the consortium.
So would she automatically be moved to the consortium now?
She would not be.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and we should message you as well so that you have an opportunity to move in to the consortium. And you'd have to opt in then. And you would be able to if you wanted to. I would highly recommend checking your contract with your ESCO, in this case, Green Mountain Energy, to make sure that you don't have to pay a fee or if you do, that you're, you're willing to pay that fee to get out.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not aware of any contract, but I am willing to pay more per kilowatt hour for green energy than for ConEd. But if there was any advantage to my joining the consortium for the town, that would also be a consideration for me. I don't know if that's true or not, like if the number of people who are joining affects the town in any way.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that. The, the advantage would be negligible, to be honest. I, I, you know, I don't have to tell you to, you know, please join us with green since you're already doing that. So, so that's great. But, but you know, if, if what you can do is you can wait and see what the price turns out to be. And if it's less than you're paying for Green Mountain Energy, then you may elect to opt in.
So I'm going to keep this moving forward because we have, we have like the agenda. There was just one other, you know, I didn't see Mr. Zuckerman raise his hand, but he had asked a question. Steve, if you could just briefly, because this is something that I know a lot of residents will have questions about, is with regard to why is this an opt-out as opposed to an opt-in? is with regard to why is this an opt out as opposed to an opt in?
Sure. Around the country, places have tried with community choice aggregation. They've tried opt in. And very few people look at their mail or decide to take the time to do it. And if they get three or four or five percent of people opting in, that's considered to be pretty good. The Public Service Commission of the State of New York decided to allow Westchester Power to try and opt out. And by doing that, it was highly successful. We got, I think, over 80% of people throughout all municipalities staying in and going green. And that's what we, you know, the Sustainable Advisory Board, the town and the state want people to go green. And it's worked very well. And by and large, people have been, you know, very satisfied.
Thank you. And I see we have one other person who's raised their hand. Christian Wiser Pratt. Carrie, if we could bring him
Your line, oops, your line should be open. Just unmute yourself. Sorry, Christian, if you want me, there you go.
Can you, am I in?
You're in.
Okay. Well, I was very skeptical of this whole program when it first came out and I signed up for it and I was glad. The first bills looked like they were good. I never bothered to look at it afterwards. I've been happy with the billing. I understand now that we've been paying more than we would have with Con Ed. So what? I will say, however, that there is an interesting sidebar here, and that is that well, as we all know, Con Ed did a lousy job during the last storm. Have they ever contended that if they made some more profits on the supply, they would be able to do a better job on the distribution?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know the answer to that, but they're not going to be allowed to, just the way New York State and most northeastern states work. We separate the supply from the distribution.
Candidly, if I had the option of opting out of their distribution, I would.
I'm with you.
And we have, and we have made similar points to the Public Service Commission on behalf of the town.
That's all.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Steve. So do we have any other questions from the town board? If not, I believe that we have a resolution tonight to authorize the town to sign on to the MOU.
Right. And we would be asking for a vote tonight because Westchester Power needs that MOU to be able to move forward. Any questions?
Okay. All right, Steve, thanks for joining us and for all your work, you know, I should just, while we have everybody say publicly that Steve and Jennifer Mead's flag from the SAB really carried the carried the water on this particular project, especially over the course of the past month, when the town board was largely consumed with with Con Ed, have a restoration and Verizon and Altis. So Steve and Jennifer, who's, I don't think with us tonight, but you know, thank you very much. You guys did a considerable amount of work on behalf of the town and really on behalf of the entire county, because your work with Sustainable Westchester to push them to better this program really benefited all residents. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Your kind words. It's our pleasure and I will definitely pass those along to Jennifer as well.
Thanks.
Is the voting now? Because I'll just, on the resolution, because I'll stay around if if it is.
We could do a resolution, we could do it quickly now, or else we can wait till the end and just do it with the rest of them. Ivy, your, your call.
Um, if anybody has the resolutions up in front of them, I'm, I'm happy to do it now.
Sure, sure. It's number three on our resolution list, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
All right, I move to authorize the town of Newcastle to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Sustainable Westchester to continue to undertake community choice aggregation demonstration project consistent with the terms included in the attached document.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, there you go, Steve.
Great, thanks very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Great.
Okay, so we'll move along to the second, second topic on our agenda for this evening. We have a presentation on behalf of the owners of Bailey Farms, which are looking to make a substantial expansion of their property and operation there.
Sabrina, you're with us. I see you.
I am with you, yes. Hello, everyone. Good evening.
Hi, Sabrina.
Okay.
Do you want me to introduce Corey and folks from Bailey Farm? Who are here tonight to present to you the request and then I can provide you with staff comments, which you all received a memorandum from us, from everyone in my office. And you can continue your discussion from there. So with that, let me turn it over to Corey. I don't know if you want to introduce your team, Corey, and then kind of tell everybody what you're looking to do.
Yep, absolutely. Good evening, Honorable Supervisor, members of the town board. My name is Corey Salomon. Here tonight on behalf of the Feminine Charitable Center, the operators of the Popular Democracy Movement Center. Here with me this evening are Tina Habib, who is the Managing Director of the Movement Center, Maria Del Torre and Kristin Chin from Hester Street Project Consultants, Elliot Maltby and Gita Nandan are project architects, Tom Otman, our project engineer, and Ken Mackowitz are traffic consultant. So before I get started, I know time is brief, but I'd like to take a moment to just thank Sabrina and Bob and Dennis and Tom, who took the time to meet with us, provide valuable feedback, which we can then incorporate or did incorporate into our proposal. So as noted in my letter to the board and the staff memo, the Movement Center would like to expand the intensity of use of the site beyond what is currently permitted by the 1987 special permit or the current zoning code. And so we're here this evening just to give a brief presentation on the current use, what our proposal is, answer any questions that you may have, and hopefully receive feedback from your board on whether you would entertain a petition to amend the zoning code to accommodate this intensity of use. So I'm going to start with a brief description of the site and the existing 87 special permit and then pass it on to Tina to talk about the current use and the need for the expansion. So the properties that we're talking about are located at 3 Barnes Road and 23 Barnes Road. 3 Barnes, which is not the subject of the existing special permit, is approximately four acres in size, improved with a 5,000 square foot house and a 1,000 square foot greenhouse. 23 Barnes is improved with 11,000 square foot farm house, as well as two accessory structures. Both properties are located in the R1A zoning district. As you can see on the map, both properties are located on the western side of town. And currently, access to the site comes off of, to both properties comes off of Barnes Road. So with respect to the 1987 special permit, as I said, it's only applicable to 23 Barnes Road, and there's a number of conditions contained in that permit, but we're mostly focused on how many people can be at the site at any one time, which currently is limited to 45, and how many seminars or projects we can have yearly on the site, which is currently set at about 19. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tina to run through the current operations and the need for the expansion.
Thanks, Corey. Hello, good evening. I'm Tina Habib, Managing Director of the Popular Democracy Movement Center and a founder of a parent organization which is called the Center for Popular Democracy. We call it CPD. And it's great to be with you tonight. We've been looking forward to this presentation for a while. So Bailey Farms, as, as most people call it, has been welcoming retreat groups for all over 35 years, offering space and hospitality to different kinds of spiritual groups, humanitarian groups, families, nonprofit organizations, and many other types of groups. And as you know, I think CPD acquired Bailey Farms in 2016, hoping to continue and expand this program. And while so much of running Retreat Center was brand new to us, we were really lucky to benefit from a combined 30 years of experience of my colleagues Lynette and Michelle, who are from Austin and Yorktown Heights. So I'll tell you a bit about CPD. We are a network of 52 community organizations across 35 states. We work together to imagine a more equitable and democratic America. So our member organizations represent autoworkers in Detroit, undocumented children in White Plains, Black Lives Matter organizers in Minneapolis. And when the opportunity to take over Bailey Farms arose, we were really thrilled at the idea of a place where activists, people from our community could come to rest, connect, strategize, and return to their work with renewed vision and you know, having had sanctuary for some time. So recently, we got to share the space and the mission of the Movement Center with none other than Harry Belafonte. And over Curry Goat from Craven, Jamaican, we talked about the power of activism through art and conversation. And he was really moved by our vision and purpose. And to our very great good fortune, he joined our Board of Directors and he named us as his legacy project, and which raised our profile among artists and civic minded organizations across the country, of course. And so for four years at Bailey Farms, we've seen what the space can do, and we've also seen its limits. We've seen the restorative nature of the landscape, the power of bringing small groups together in person. We've continued to welcome small groups for retreats lasting two to four days, but we know that there's a need for larger groups to access the space too or to stay longer. So our vision is broad and inspired, but the property as it exists right now doesn't actually allow for people to gather in the way that we, we would like, so that their collective energy and spirits could sort of be galvanized in a way. And also, it doesn't provide us the flexibility to accommodate more than one group at a time. So with a top notch team of people that are on this call, we have a vision for a larger central communal space, smaller areas for group conversation, and on campus event center that's separate from our retreat facilities. And I think the last six months have shown us beyond any previous understanding how vital it is to connect in person, human to human, that people are really hungry for the chance to gather and create and build together, and for the opportunity to retreat, retreat to beautiful spaces and being community. And our hope is that these proposed renovations give more people the chance to do just that. So I wanted to talk a little bit about how we hope to give back and public access to the space. Sharing resources to build community and capacity is like, is at the core of our values and our operating model at the Center for Popular Democracy. So we're eager to share with the active, you know, we're eager to be active with the members of the town. And we look forward to building more relationships with businesses and, and people. We've come up with some initial ideas on how we might do that. And we'd love to hear from, you know, residents about what else they might, what would also strengthen this partnership. So we thought about a community day where the center would be open to the public, a grounds for the town to use their sponsored events like fireworks, displays, or annual picnics, discounts for local organizations or businesses and residents, a preference for local vendors, scholarships for groups that might want to use the center, priority for local artists or activists who apply to our residency programs. We thought about site tours for schools or other groups, and use of our parking facilities for local events when we're not using them. So that's some of what we've begun to think about and we look forward to continuing this conversation.
Hi, my name is Elliot Maltby. I'm with the architecture firm. And I'm going to be talking about the existing conditions and the proposed design. As shown here, you can see the site is blessed with a beautiful bucolic and really varied landscape, which we really are working to preserve. Next. Moving to the next slide. I'll just keep talking. In addition to the open meadows and forested areas, there are extensive wetlands, a couple of creeks, and a large pond. As noted before, there are several existing buildings. The main building is currently supporting most of the indoor activities, which, and I want to note, we're retaining this existing building. There's a residence known as the Pond House, and then there are two sheds as well. Next slide. One, the next slide, when do we get there? This diagram locates those buildings in dark blue with the existing landscape characteristics as well, and shows the code requirements that shape our buildable areas. So if we use the wetland buffer, which is 100 foot setback in dashed red, and, oops, we've gone one ahead, and the property line setbacks, I guess it's fine, next one now. We then have these three buildable pockets of, or pockets of buildable area that we're working with. And I wanted to note that the septic also must be located within these three green zones. So based on an ideal expansion, really kind of our vision as outlined by Tina, that we are proposing sort of three distinct areas on the site. Still, you know, the idea is preserving the wetlands, preserving the forested areas, being as light as possible. So we are proposing a new building, an event space at the approximate location of the Pond House. This is located close to Route 133. This building takes advantage of the topography and the views of the pond and keeps this kind of interesting rocky outcropping. Two is renovating this existing main building, just improving interiors for better gathering and meeting. There are some, we're proposing some sleeping spaces in this space, and there's no change to the exterior building and retaining the large meadow across from that, and that would be the septic for the two sites on this side of the creek. The third area is the sleeping cabin area on the eastern portion of the site, and then still trying to keep much, much of the open meadow there, using that also for septic. Each area has a small parking lot associated with it, either 15 or 19 spaces with an ADA spot. And the circulation, as you can see, is from Route 133. I'll talk more about that. Just to note, we're considering rebuilding those existing sheds as a space for artists and residents. And then just that this is really at the site planning stage and has developed in response to several conversations we've been having with the planning board. We're not presenting calculations, but we have begun them. Those that were outlined in the staff review memo, and we'll have those available. On the next slide.
If I may, just for a point of clarification, there have been no conversations with the planning board. It has been town staff pre-application meetings that the conversations have been held with professional staff.
Okay. One of the primary goals of the layout is to minimize impact for the neighbors. And the first strategy is to remove traffic from Barnes Road, so connecting instead to Route 133. The existing driveway in red that's connecting to the south there, the idea is to use that for emergency vehicle use only. There would be a gate at, at Barnes Road, and then the driveway at the Pond House is fully eliminated. And a traffic analysis has been conducted that supports the viability of this proposed road location and new access point. We're also proposing to augment the existing trees with evergreens and landscape buffers at the cabin area, adding landscape buffers and sound attenuation to the south and west of the event space. And we will work to ensure that car lights are not visible to neighbors. This may require some buffer planting for the neighbor across 133. There'll also be a tree replacement plan as per the town's requirements. The other major goal for this layout and design is to protect the wetlands. A short length of the road is the only incursion in the wetland area. This proposed location was determined by having a number of different options. It avoids an existing water course and reduces the amount of road near to the pond. And there's, through a strategic use of retaining walls, tries to minimize as much as possible our wetland impact. We are anticipating disturbing approximately 5,000 square feet of wetland, and then we'll meet the required mitigation with the potential, but to be determined, at the gaps in the existing wetland zones. at the gaps in the existing wetland zones. Given the scale and location of the required septic, we do, at this point, see needing to locate some of the program on the east side of the property. There, we are using an existing crossing at the creek. Just to note, the connection to 133 adheres to required distances from intersection, maintains stopping site distances along 133, and the road location itself avoids slopes in excess of twenty-five percent grade, among other DOT requirements. We are proposing to locate parking within the wetland buffer. The idea is to design these as light as possible with permeable paving and buffer and filter planting. And we are currently proposing a reduced amount of parking, looking at fifty-three spaces rather than this required seventy-nine, minimizing paved area, but still, we believe sufficient, given supplemental strategies such as bus parking and drop-off. We have two bus parking spots, carpooling, and a shuttle from the train station. The septic envelopes are bound by the wetland buffer, the setback from the property line, plus an analysis of the topography and perk test done earlier this year. Tom, our civil engineer, prepared preliminary calculations based on the proposed expansion, based on the new capacity that we're looking at, and we do have sufficient septic capacity as per this diagram. And then just in conclusion, sort of all these considerations come together in the site plan. We're really working to protect, as I said, the kind of bucolic quality and beauty of the landscape, protecting the wetlands and minimizing and mitigating impact on the neighbors.
Thank you, Elliot. So just quickly, I want to run through some of the capacity numbers that we're talking about. As I said earlier, right now, only twenty-three barns is the subject of the special permit, and we can have a maximum of forty-five people on the site at any one time. We now own three barns, and we want to amend the special permit, include that under the current zoning, we would be allowed to have up to sixty people on the site. As you see here in the slide, the max that we'd ever be proposing at any one time would be two hundred and thirty, but that would only be, you know, four times a year, once every three months. But generally speaking, we'd be talking about an average daily use of thirty to seventy people during the day programs, sixty to a hundred for the night programs. And then for some of the overnight stays, we're talking about, you know, a max of sixty, but really, it'll be on average about twenty to forty people. As I said, under the current zoning and the current special permit, this intensity of use is not permitted. So in order to get there, we would have to have a zone text amendment adopted by your board. And so in order to accommodate that, we looked at how can we expand the intensity of use but limit it, so it just can't go, you know, anywhere in town. And so we came up with three criteria, as you see before you. The first is that the use has to be established. It's got to be continuous and operational for at least twenty years. The second criteria would be that it has to be on at least fifteen acres. And the third would be that it has to have direct access to a state or county road. So after coming up with those, I went through your assessment rolls and identified a total of a hundred and thirty properties in Newcastle that are over, that are fifteen acres or more. Of those, fifty-eight are owned by Con Ed, the state used by school districts. So we eliminated fifty-eight parcels that aren't institutional now, and doesn't seem like the current ownership will be divesting themselves of these properties. So that left us seventy-two parcels. Of those seventy-two, only thirty-four have direct access to a state or county road. And of those thirty-four, only one, Bailey Farms, has been operational for twenty years. So with that, that concludes our presentation. We'd like to hear any questions you have and hopefully get some feedback from your board on whether this would be something that you'd be willing to entertain.
So if I may, before the board asks their questions, I wanted to frame kind of what the board's responsibilities are in relation to this application. As has been stated, this this use on the property, the existing use is able to function on the property due to a nineteen eighty-seven special use permit issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals. That special permit covered one of the two properties that are before you this evening, the larger of the two properties. And the applicant would need to amend that special permit on many levels. In order to conduct the use that they're looking to place on the two properties today, it is a much greater intensity than was previously approved under the nineteen eighty-seven special use permit and would actually require some changes to the special permit requirements in the town code, specifically regarding the size of the property for use such as this to occur. That is why they are before your board, to garner your sense of whether or not you are interested in amending legislation. Mr. Solomon had indicated that he had looked at other similar properties in our community where the change in legislation may impact those other uses. So, you know, it's very important in your consideration to determine whether or not, one, you think that this is a good idea and you want to change the code to allow this, but also what other properties the changes in the code may impact. So one of the things that town staff have done in meeting with the applicant several times is to really outline the issues for them to really determine what the realistic intensity of use from a physical standpoint can be. The applicant spoke of, you know, identifying septic areas, undertaking percolation tests to determine if septic is functional, conducting a traffic analysis to determine the number of cars. We have not seen any of that information, you know, what we've seen or similar to what has been before you tonight. And so we came up with a list of things that we thought needed to be included in information to determine what the maximum intensity this this group is looking for at this time on the site. So that's really the the key to all of this. And then whether or not the town board is interested in amending town legislation, not just the special use permit, but it goes beyond that, to amend the town code to allow the intensity of use on this, on the properties that are the subject of this application to occur. So I'm gonna end there. I just wanted to define kind of why they are before you. If there is a good indication that you think that this use is acceptable, you know, they would return back to the Zoning Board of Appeals and go through a special use permit amendment process before that board, which also includes referral to the planning board, most likely the Environmental Review Board and the Architectural Review Board for what they're about to undertake.
I guess, since no one's raising their hand to start, my concern out of the gate is the scope of this. And we have a master plan that we spend a lot of time putting together, defining where we want to concentrate people and activity, and where we want to keep it more bucolic and open. And on the West End, there's been, as you may or may not be aware, a lot of issues about development that may be not, something that are not appropriate for the location. Sunshine Children Home, there's a neighboring property as well, that to Newcastle, it has some issues too. So the numbers that you're looking at are, to me, just seem an astronomical change. It's going from cozy and small, relatively speaking, to, you know, I wouldn't want to say humongous, but it's pretty significant in size. It's about quadruples, I think the numbers roughly were. So I have my concerns about size. I think it's beneficial that it gets rerouted to 133 in terms of local road usage, but I have my initial concerns about, is that appropriate for this location? And is it consistent with our master plan? So I have real concerns out of the gate.
I would agree with that, and I would just add that I went and took a look at the special use permit from nineteen eighty-seven, and they took pains several times in that special use permit to talk about the fact that the use would not be much greater than if you had subdivided that property into four parcels and built four individual homes on those properties. And I believe that the reason that they did that in granting the special use permit was to signal to the neighbors that what was being proposed and what would ultimately be created in the middle of this neighborhood was consistent with the zoning in that neighborhood, although they would be amending it to allow for that use. And so when I look at that, to me, what we're talking about doing here then sort of breaks that unofficial contract, which is what I consider zoning to be, between the neighborhood and the town. And so the neighborhood, you know, believes that they live in an R1A zone, and they have, you know, certain expectations about what will and will not be built in their neighborhood. And to my mind, what we're now talking about, regardless of the use, which Tina is a beautiful use, regardless of the use, I think that we have to set that aside and consider the the contract between the town and the neighbors who live there. And this, to me, is just at a scale, as Jeremy mentioned, that that goes beyond what I think is is realistic for that neighborhood.
And even if we, you know, hypothetically allowed this to happen, I, in terms of density, I'm really concerned about traffic impacts, even more concerned about noise impacts on the surrounding neighbors. You know, if you're having new event facilities, I assume that means more people are going to be outside. So there's a lot more noise and a lot more impact on the the neighborhood in general. So I'd want to see even analysis on all of that before we even contemplate this.
I agree with what all of you said. The the master plan, comprehensive plan, you know, does, as Jeremy Jeremy said, does talk to how how our neighborhood should and should, or should or shouldn't develop, right? The idea of traffic, noise, and environment, right? The the impact to wetland areas and how water flows throughout the property. You know, there is an impact, obviously. I would think that if there was something to go forward, there would be some type of environmental impact statement to go and figure out how this type of development would impact the neighbors, how water flows from property to property, noise and and traffic.
So Jason, sort of to give you some guidance on that, the process does include the environmental impact analysis, SECRE. This project is subject to SECRE. It's before a couple of boards. It's before the ZBA, if they proceed to amend their existing special use permit. It would be before the planning board for site plan subdivision and the environmental permits. But really, what leads the train, so to speak, before any of those discussions can get too far down the road, before the applicant spends the time and money, is the is the town board interested in amending the zoning ordinance to allow this use? You know, the town board needs to look at the project, what benefits the applicant is suggesting, how that impacts your vision of the community and what's already permitted on the zoning code, and do you want to allow more than what is presently required? It's within your discretion to say yes or no. You may want to decide to wait, get some of that analysis and go through that. That can be a lot of time and money on the applicant's part. I think the applicant tonight is hoping to get some guidance from the board. Is this doable? Is it no dead-on arrival? Are the modifications that could be made? You know, more for them to advocate and ask those questions, but that's sort of the guidance that tonight, I think the applicant is looking for to receive from this board, but that's the process. SECRE is embedded in all of that, and before they can go to the zoning board or the planning board, it'd have to, one of the agencies, one of those boards would be lead agency, and the town board have to make a determination on amending the zoning code.
You know, I'm all for local businesses trying to expand their opportunities. But my question then to you folks would be, what is, assuming that we can come to a meeting of the minds, and as it stands now, I will tell you, I have very significant concerns about the scope and size and location. Where is that, if I use the term middle ground, where are you? And, you know, another, expanding it to thirty more people makes it economically feasible. Expanding it to seventy-five people make it more, you know, when I say people, use for that matter of people, and X amount of nights as opposed to two hundred and fifty-two nights a year, eighty nights a year is more feasible. So is there a watered-down, if you will, version? You know, it's funny, I'm looking at everyone, but I'm looking now at you, Tina, and you can't tell. Look at your box. But, you know, is there, is there a, is there a, is there a ground, a middle ground, a lesser ground? Is there something else that you're considering? Because I get the sense that there's concern amongst the board that it's just too large as it is.
Yes, I'm getting that also. I'm, I, for sure. I mean, we have, like I said, we've been in this community, us specifically, four years before us, you know, almost thirty-four years. So we we've been surviving and sort of making do as it is, but our expanded vision is obviously quite expanded. But we are good neighbors, and we wouldn't, you know, if there's, if this isn't possible, then we do still feel like there is the possibility, like the need and the possibility of expanding from, you know, thirty-three-years-old permit that is is pretty, you know, klugey. And so, yeah, there's a middle ground for sure, but, you know, we're starting high.
I think at a minimum, if you look at the permit and it only applies to one of the two properties, I mean, at a minimum, bringing in that second property that you now own, you know, which would at least provide for some additional usage on the property, feels like something that, you know, it's significantly less than what you're looking to do. So I don't, I don't even know if you're interested in that, but but, you know, that that is certainly, I think, something that would feel more comfortable and more doable for me. And then just the other thing I would mention is just with regard to if you're going to think about kind of the range of options and what might be something that, you know, is somewhat scaled back, but still something that's of interest to you, I would really recommend, and it sounds like it would be something that would be actually your forte, given the kind of work that you do, but engaging with with the neighbors over there. We've got like at least a dozen of them sitting in on this Zoom call because they're really super concerned, and we were hearing from them all day today about how much they don't want this in their neighborhood. And I have to say, it, you know, it resonates with us when we get that kind of response from neighbors to a proposal like this. So, you know, if there's a way that you can bring them in, invite them onto the farm and and have those conversations, it would feel a lot more comfortable, I think, for the town board if we had the sense that there was that kind of partnership. And I appreciated the slide that you did about, you know, ways in which there would be benefit to the community. But, you know, we not only want to think about the community at large, but really about your your specific neighbors.
And I just want to chime in real quick. I'm one of the architects working with Elliot Moppy and Tina. I I think that there are some pieces of information that should the application be able to move forward would be really important to present to you in terms of the uses. And so I think when you hear like two hundred and fifty people, you might think of that like happening every day, but that's absolutely not the case. And then also to really, for us to show to you the types of uses. And so, you know, this is like, I don't know if you've ever gone to like outdoor gathering spaces where there are conferences. These are like people discussing stuff, right, and talking about things and planning the futures. And I think it's not like loud rock concerts happening, you know, every day. So I just, I want to be really clear that while it's like the word, and just using, for us to use the word intensity of use already makes it sound like it's really intense, but it's not, right? And I think that we all really need to understand that this site is incredibly big. It's like for, for, at least for Tina and for this type of organization, it's a pretty big site, right? And so the type of intensity would actually not be super intense because it would be located with different functions in different parts where maybe you have twenty people gathering at any given moment, right? And so with a leader doing, you know, roundtable discussions. So I just want to be really clear, and then there's a timeframe to all of this. And so I think for us to show you what that timeframe looks like over a week and a month and a year, and what those types of uses are, would be really important.
The thing is, if the zoning is changed, I don't think you can guarantee that this is only going to happen once every few months, we're only going to have this many people that, you know, if you're successful, that may end up changing. And I don't know that you can guarantee that that would never increase. You know, I'd love for you guys, Tina, to go back and, to Ivy's point, with the neighbors and and come up with a realistic proposal, because it seems like two hundred and thirty people, I don't think is going to happen. I mean, I'm just speaking for myself. But maybe come up with, you know, don't shoot for the stars necessarily. Come up with what realistically you think you need and want to propose and what would work appropriately in the space. And then, you know, talk to neighbors and and see, you know, where that goes.
So if I could just jump in a couple of things with respect to the two hundred and thirty number, that was really, it was quarterly, and I Um, that was really, it was quarterly and I, you know, the, the real number is somewhere more of, of the daily use is somewhere between the, the thirty and seventy. And I'm sorry if I wasn't clear before, the three Barnes Road, the four acres is going to be merged in with this. We'll have a total of twenty acres and based on your existing zoning code, we can get approximately sixty people at any given time. So the average daily use is kind of right in the wheelhouse of what we would be permitted anyway. With respect to meeting with the neighbors, we're absolutely gonna have a meeting with the neighbors and outreach with them. But wanted to first present this information to you, so you had all the facts that we would be discussing with them. So if you received their phone calls, it wasn't coming out of nowhere, you were informed before the neighbors were. So it was just a matter of, uh, you know, form, we thought it was more appropriate to come to the town board first to give you the information. And then meet with, um, the neighbors. And then with respect to what your counsel had to say, that, I mean, that's exactly right. We're here mostly just to get your feedback, um, to see if there's something that would fly before we delve into the nitty gritty. I mean, we've done a ton of work already and spent a ton of time and a ton of money. But there are still some more details to be ironed out, but those details differ. Um, based on what we're going to be allowed, you know, versus what we want.
And for the most part, I, I think all of us as a town board, we're, we're pretty. On par with, um, just the overall scope of the project. And the ask for changing zoning legislation is a pretty big ask in, in this project. And so we are asking, you know, can you go back and see what would be economically feasible? What are the numbers? And, you know, uh, again, like I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but two hundred and thirty, that's a four hundred percent increase of what you're currently at now. And so I think that it's great to ask for the moon and stars, but I think realistically, you know, coming back with a number that. All folks will buy into will work. And, um, because I think that the work and everything that you folks do on the organization that, um, all the, all the organizations that you host. It's all meaningful and interesting and, and really important. So we do, we absolutely do wanna move forward in some sort of way. But I think that as it stands today, it's, it's just too dry. I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, perk block coverage, um. All of the environmental, you know, impacts of this type of project. And, and initially just looking at the numbers, it, it just doesn't seem feasible to me to, to pursue those type of. Occupancy rates and frequency, intensity of visits, et cetera, um, at this point.
I, I, I don't wanna jump on directly contrary to what Lauren is saying. I don't know if I'm fully on board with the, what, what you're saying, Lauren, meaning. I'm open to a smaller discussion, but I just have my concerns generally about the appropriateness of this. Facility even close to this size in a residential neighborhood that isn't really zoned for it, that's not inconsistent with the master plan. So for me personally, it's a hard lift to even get it. I would never, I'm, I'm not ready to say no, um, but it's a hard lift to move it anywhere near its current shape and form. For the reasons I just stated and have said repeatedly. I, I would never say, no, you shouldn't try and make effort, but I know personally it's, it's gonna be a lift.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Jeremy. I'm not, I'm not ready to say that I, I would like to see this move forward in, in some shape or form. I would really need to have a lot more, um, buy-in from the neighborhood. Um, for me, changing zoning would need to have a really compelling purpose. Um, and I'm not hearing that and I am concerned, uh, again, about, about. Going against what we've said in our comprehensive plan and, and the contract that we've made with, with the town in that way. Um, I do see that we have some questions coming in over the chat. Um, and we also have some participants who are raising their hand. Um, I'm gonna, Carrie, can we bring, um, Christian Weiser Pratt into the, uh?
Okay, Christian, you should unmute your mic.
Yeah, I think I've done that.
You're on.
Okay. Well, I've submitted a letter that I think the board has received based upon what I heard from today from Ivy Pool. What's interesting about this is that nearly everybody in this neighborhood agrees with the objectives of this group. I mean, there are Black Lives Matters sign here and stuff like that. Um, but this is totally inappropriate for this neighborhood. And what, uh, really kind of. Gets me, this is the first time I've seen that there would be this, that they're joining number three Barnes. Which is a slightly derelict house on the corner. Um, in order to have access to Route one thirty-three. The road that they proposed to put in from Route one thirty-three is going to go right across all of our. Um, drainage into the pool, the pond back there. We actually all have easements for drainage, but they're gonna have to block that off with this asphalt construction. We already have very, very severe water problems on this side of the road. You have to be here during a rainstorm to see the way the water pours off of the hill. Um, of what used to be, um, Rand Farm. And, um. Mr. Zappi tried to develop that into, uh, a high-density community in Austin, which was gonna be built by. Blasting with dynamite on top of the, uh, new Croton Reservoir Aqueduct, which supplies ten percent of New York City's water. That fortunately helped put a stop to that nonsense. But, um, these are just totally inappropriate uses for this kind of land. And what's really bothersome to me about the road going out to one thirty-three. Yes, that does obviate the problem of how do you get fire trucks up, uh, off of Barnes? But if you take a look at that land, it's mush. It's our drainage. And, um, we have problems now, but it, the, um. I think the name is the Zimmerman's had to actually put in a new septic field two years ago because of their drainage, drainage problems. The Paganelli's at number, I think it's seventeen, next house next to mine. Um, have had to build endless underground ditches to take diversion of the water they already get. Because their septic system was having to be pumped out every two months or something like that. You can't put this kind of a, of a strain on this area. It's absurd. It's just not a reasonable thing to do. I agree with their objectives. I contribute money on that side of the political spectrum. That is not the point. I'm even a big fan of Harry Belafonte, going back to Dan Deo. That's not the point. It's wrong here, absolutely wrong. And that road that they're gonna put in from one thirty-three is like a garrote going around the neck of the neighborhood. It's an outrage. That's all I have to say for now. And I'm glad to see that some of the people on the board, or maybe most of the people on the board have similar reservations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weiser Platt. Um, do we have any other comments or questions from anybody who's in the audience? I know we've got a lot of people who, who dialed in tonight.
Sure, yes, yes.
Yeah, if I may, it's, uh, Tom Otman, I'm the project engineer.
Thank you very much.
For Bailey Farms. Um, you know, the road is a significant access off of one thirty-three.
Okay, I'm sorry, can I just interrupt you for just a moment? I'm hearing a lot of background noise. If, if everybody else can just please mute your line, um, so that we can hear Tom loud and clear.
Sorry about that.
Thanks.
Okay, yeah, so the road coming off of one thirty-three is, uh, to basically keep all the traffic off of Barnes Road. Um, I, I don't know the specific septic systems that were just spoken of, but I can tell you that, uh. We are, you know, we're able to handle the drainage that would be produced on the property. I don't, I don't think drainage should be the, uh, the issue. Because I know we are crossing a wetland, but we're also, uh, providing, excuse me, one second here. I need to, uh. I need to turn off something. I apologize, trying to handle two meetings at the same night. So I'm actually on with the city of Norwalk, while I'm, I'm on this meeting too. So anyway, the, uh, the driveway off of one thirty-three, I think that makes a lot of sense because, uh. It pulls the traffic for the site off of Barnes Road and, uh, just leaves the secondary, uh, emergency entrance onto Barnes Road. Uh, we're able to handle any of the drainage, the drainage in the corridor, although we haven't gotten into all the details. Because obviously, uh, we're still at the, the schematic phase. Uh, drainage should not be an issue, drainage would be enhanced if anything, uh, running through the property. With the improvement of the road, improvement of culverts, um, you know, detention areas, the use of the pond for detention. Water quality would be engaged and improved, uh, cuz we would be putting certainly low-impact development scenarios in place. So I don't think the road or the drainage is really an issue, uh, that's gonna cause a lot of problems in the future. I just wanted to make that comment.
Thanks, Tom. I appreciate that. We have one more hand that's up at this point. Um, we're gonna take this last question and then we're gonna go ahead and move forward with our agenda for this evening. So, uh, Richard Zuckerman, we have, uh, can we bring him on, please? Or you just need to unmute yourself?
I am unmuted, if you can hear me, can you hear me? One, one, one.
We can hear you.
Excellent. Um, uh, my property basically on three sides borders, uh, Bailey Farms. If you include the drive easement that's, that's there. Um, the patio that's used, um, outside of the main building, we can hear people just talking there. They've recently installed a basketball there. I don't know during COVID, they've had a lot of people, I think over time, staying there. Um, you know, which I guess generally is fine, it's just gets to be a little bit noisy at time. And, uh, it actually bothers me a little, I'll, I'll tell you, to hear noise every single time. But essentially what's being proposed here and for the use is it's a hotel. Um, if you read the promotional material, the place is, um, rented out for a fee, people stay there. They don't currently, I have no idea, you see people talking about, uh, that the services, uh, were excellent. I don't know what services that they, they provide. Um, but they're talking about, uh, you know, lots of people there, lots of people at a frequency there. It just doesn't belong in a, uh, in, in a neighborhood. Uh, they're gonna have outdoor activities, sporting activities. Um, if you read the promotional material, it, it, there's stuff, there's stuff, there's stuff in there that actually talks about, uh, the other activities that you can have. Uh, in the area, hiking trails, et cetera, et cetera. Um, a, a, at any expansion, I, I think, uh, you're gonna be hard pressed to get me to have any buy-in for your expanded use. And I would suggest the same for most of the other people in the neighborhood. I would think, um. There's also going to be, it, you know, something, something that I, I'd be a little bit concerned about if I was the, the board. There's gonna be, won't there also be a loss of, uh, tax revenue by the conversion of property number three to be part of the, uh, the nonprofit? Um, something to consider. Um, noise, the construction noise, how long the construction will be. And I would actually ask each one of you if you would like to live next to a facility all of a sudden plop down. Having the, the types, uh, and numbers of visitors, guests during the day, during the night. Um, just a surprise. And if any of you would like to, I'd be more than happy to sell my house to you at current prices plus a small premium. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Zuckerman. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and wrap up, um, this conversation. Um, I think that we've given some clarity, I hope that we've given some clarity, um, to the Bailey Farms folks about what we would expect to see. Um, should you be interested in continuing to move this forward? Um, I think that you hear that there's some pretty healthy skepticism on the part of the town board with regard to whether we would want to consider. Um, changing the town code to allow for this type of a use. Um, but you know, I think we, the doors open a crack and so far as if you can get together with these neighbors. And you know, you've heard that there's some real healthy skepticism on their part too. Um, but you know, if there's, if the doors open a crack, that's what it's open for is, is figuring out how to win over the community. Um, because otherwise I think that, um, you know, the, you're hearing from the board. Um, that changing the zoning, uh, for this particular use is not something that we would be interested in considering. Okay.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. So moving back to our agenda, let's switch screens.
Sorry.
Jill, we're up to the Millwood Water Treatment Plant.
Right.
Everybody, have a good night.
Good night, Sabrina, thank you.
Thank you, thanks Sabrina.
Um, right, so we've got a retroactive request for payment of, um, eighteen thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. It's an annual service agreement for services that are required by the, uh, Westchester County Department of Health. Um, we do these annually, we needed to do them, we did them unfortunately. What we didn't do was bring this renewal on a timely basis to the board. So my apologies about that. The good news is that we're on the right side of the Westchester County Department of Health and we've done everything we're supposed to do. Uh, we're just looking for authorization so we can pay an outstanding bill. The board have any questions? Thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is authorization to purchase four replacement, um, drag chains for the horizontal grinder. Now, this is an additional six thousand dollar expense that I just wanted to bring to the board's attention. Um, uh, it, it is an expenditure that I did approve because we had people on site to take and actually make these improvements. And clearly in light of this past storm that we had, our horizontal grinder was, was more important than ever for us to be able to deal with a lot of the, the storm debris. That DPW collected from the sides of the roads. Um, uh, we were unaware that the, uh, drag chains were in fact, uh, original with the equipment. And they needed to be, um, replaced when they opened it up. Um, we're trying very hard to be mindful of that budget, um, gap that we're facing. And so I just wanted the board to be aware that this did run a little bit more than we thought it was gonna run.
Hey Jill, where are we in terms of the project, in terms of replacing the horizontal grinder? It feels like it's something that comes up every year at budget time. Are we?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars when we originally bought it. If ten years ago, fifteen years ago, Rob? Was it a two thousand five?
Yeah, it's, it's probably right around fifteen.
So it was a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar item back then.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, we have, um, the, the Chestnut Oaks, um, condos that are right across from. Uh, the recycling yard and DPW yard.
Right.
Um, are tremendously adversely impacted by the noise of that horizontal grinder. When it was, um, operating at its height, we got. A substantial number of noise complaints daily. Um, about it just really bothering them and being, you know, uh, tremendously negatively impactful to the community. So we really tried to take in limited where we could. Also, it was helpful to us to limit it because we were hopefully prolonging the life of the, um, of the, um, uh, machinery. But, um, at some point, um, and we haven't gotten there yet, we are gonna have to replace it, but it's a significant piece of equipment. So if we can prolong its life, you know, it's not like this was a, an inexpensive bill, it wasn't. Um, the, the board approved initially twenty-five, almost just shy of twenty-six thousand dollars. And then we added another six, so you're talking thirty-two thousand dollars, which is no small repair bill. But considering it's probably a million dollars to take and replace it, or just shy of that at this point. Um, we're gonna try to keep it going for, you know, as long as is reasonably possible. So we're hoping for another year or two or three out of it, if we can. At some point, it's diminishing returns and we just have to bite the bullet, but.
Okay, sorry.
We're hoping to get a little bit out of it, no, it is where it is. Um, um, I'm sorry, uh, we, we got, um, Nick didn't think we did the drive-in movie, but I have a check next to it, we talked about that. I, my math was awesome, yeah.
You did.
Sorry, Nick, I'll repeat it, my math was awesome. And I said forty, forty-five, but it's actually, uh, between forty-five and change and forty-eight. And I said 40, 45, but it's actually between 45 and change and 48. So I'm asking the board to amend it up to 48 so that we're, he just wanted to hear me say that my math was off that. It's fine. I'm, I'm over it now. It's good. Next is, we got, we got a request from a new merchant in town who was inquiring about our business improvement program.
This is the facade, the facade.
And so I wanted, interested in bringing it back to the board to see whether or not, now that, you know, our, our business district is slowly but surely, you know, trying to come out from under COVID and our construction, whether or not the board might consider activating this program and allowing merchants to take advantage of it. Thoughts?
I mean, I think it's great, obviously. Can, what are our, in order to move forward with the program, what would our next steps be at this point? Can you just remind me? I can't remember. We need to pass a resolution or we need a local law to do this?
I believe we were doing a local law and the, the question that we were challenged on last time was the funding. And, and how, how long would we be keeping that funding sort of locked into the program? How long would it be, you know, yeah, locked in so that it couldn't be used for other things if we needed it down the road?
Kind of, I, if I remember correctly, we were planning on taking the money from that pool from Summit Greenfield. And is, you know, what, I don't know what the current balance is because I assume that we've spent some of that money with the group that we hired for the form-based code.
Yes, we did. So we've actually got, there were actually four uses for the money. So Barton and Legudis for the chap line was one, that contract was 104,000. We allocated 308,000 to the basketball court and playground to help make up some of that shortfall. A small amount, something less than 10,000. This one, discovered chap, well, I think we had another invoice or two since I last updated this. So that might've gone over like 10,000. And then Kimley Horn for the rezoning was about 410,000. That's what's charged. Jill, can you think of anything else that I might've missed? That's what I have tracked.
No, that's the, that's it. That's what we've got. So what, what would the balance be?
It's about 660,000 or so at this point that's remaining in that fund.
Okay. I mean, I think it's, it's certainly something to relook at. I, I think if it's, if the numbers make sense and there are merchants who really do want to use it. My main concern was initially with the project was that there weren't any merchants who were going to pursue it and allocating that money, I think originally it was, correct me if I'm wrong, this has been a while, but like 150,000, like it, the number just, just.
That sounds right to me, yeah.
Okay, it just, it just, it just scared me a little bit, just, you know, pooling money that we're not, because the feedback that I've received from certain merchants, they've said that they, they didn't think that it was helpful. But Jill, if you're saying that there are merchants out there who, who will use it and who will, you know, pursue projects, then I, I mean, I, I think it's something to relook at.
Okay.
So. Does anyone, Ivy, what are your thoughts on that? A smaller amount to start? Or does that really make a difference in the end because it doesn't all have to be allocated?
Well, it's, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to ask, I didn't understand what you said. It doesn't really make a difference in the end.
Because you don't have to allocate all the dollars anyway.
Right, because you don't have to allocate. I'm not understanding.
Well, if you have $100,000 to give, for lack of a better term, you don't have to give all $100,000. You could end up giving $7,500 or $5,000.
Correct. Yeah, no, I mean, you know, we could, we could authorize up to $75,000 at this point because that's a number we feel more comfortable with now. And, you know, I mean, to be honest with you, if it takes off and we get 75,000, even if we get $50,000, if we, if we get that many projects, hopefully we're seeing the benefit of it such that we would want to devote more to it. I think it's less about what that, what that number is and more about have we gotten it right in terms of the grant amount and the applicability of the grant. So, you know, I think, I think we can certainly scale it back and, and talk about, you know, adding more to it if we need to in the future. That makes sense to me. Sorry, but Lisa, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, you know, the merchants that I spoke to were not super interested in this and I'm not really swayed by a new merchant who's coming to town who didn't live through, you know, the construction. That was the reason we were initially doing this, was kind of do whatever we could to help our current merchants who had to suffer through all of that. And we have such a huge deficit right now. I'm just concerned to use that money right now when we may find other uses that are more imperative right now to use that for. That's where I am. And I didn't hear so much that merchants were really so interested in it.
Actually, well, I'm sorry. No, I was just commenting. We, we got an inquiry, so at least there's one merchant. And the fact that it's a new merchant coming to town, willing to take a chance after the construction and after COVID, I think it's putting out the welcome mat. We've got how many vacant storefronts? We're trying our best to take, yeah, we're trying our best. I know, I just circulated this today. So, you know, we're, we're trying our best to take in, you know, put out the welcome mat and let people know that with the form-based code, with everything else, that, that we're open for business, that we're encouraging, you know, people to come back into town and to take a chance on us. I just think it's another welcome mat. Ultimately, your decision.
I, I know we've been talking about a deficit. But I feel like it's hard to know what the actual numbers are, Rob, because I know you, you do like a quarterly financial update. And, you know, I remember in our last meeting, I mentioned we weren't expecting any chips revenue and like the sales tax revenue was a different number, even summer camp, like you had it at zero initially.
Right. I will be updating that. I'll get with Jill early in September, the first or second meeting, depending on when it works for the agenda. Right, a lot of those numbers have changed. We have more clarity on some of those numbers. Some of the pessimistic numbers that we had, sales tax and mortgage tax, didn't necessarily come out that way. But then some other things were kind of, we're still up in the air with parking, whether or not we'll see revenue from that this year. I will say that we've, we've done a pretty decent job controlling expenses. I, I think it really helped that we kind of, that we put limits on things and department heads have really bought into that and are really taking a second look. So I've got to, got to plug everything in and re-crunch the numbers, but I'll have an update for that. I mean, certainly we're still, you know, I, I feel better than the number that I gave you last time, but not clear, not out of the woods. We're, we're definitely going to have a, we're going to take a hit this year for sure.
And one of the things that, that we have been talking about is pushing the, the parking renewal a little bit further back, having it be maybe, you know, December 15th and allowing businesses and, and, you know, professions to reopen in the city and hoping that, you know, people will resume commuting and taking the train into the city, which is really the important thing as opposed to driving. So if we can, you know, right now, we were thinking October 15th, you know, for parking renewals. And I think our recommendation for the board is going to be to push it to November 15th.
Okay. And when, I'm sorry, when would you be making the budget presentation to us?
I'll check with Jill. I'm not sure what the agendas look like. I mean, I'm, I'm available. I'll be on the meeting next week. I don't really have anything prepared. I'm, I'm starting my budget.
Right.
Meetings now, but if I could do the 15th, I could do the 22nd, depending on what those agendas look like, so just.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, we'll give the board an update on that.
Yeah, and that's helpful to me as, as I'm developing the revenue projections for next year too. It, it's helpful to see where we are and kind of hopefully forecast next year. We'll see.
So procedurally, in terms of the facade program, if we want to move forward with it and it's a local law, what are the next steps?
Um, Nick, we take in, recirculate it. And the next step would be to set it down for a public hearing.
So say, yes, we need to schedule a public hearing. There's no referrals to the county or any of the board. So it's just a matter of scheduling that hearing so we can circulate the, the final draft that we had. And I think there were some ancillary resolutions that went along with it also. So we can do that and then for the next meeting of board can schedule that hearing if you like.
Great. I think we should go ahead and schedule that.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. The next thing that we had on the agenda was a payment of claims for review and adoption of minutes from August 11. Here are. Bill, okay, I'm just taking a look at executive session. There was just one thing in executive session that is actually on the town board meeting for approval. It's, it really is not an issue to, for us to just talk about it real briefly in work session. And that is, we, for years now, we have been struggling with Westchester County Civil Service to create a assistant supervisor for water systems operation. So for those of you who are familiar with John Migliaccio, he runs our water unit. And it was always our intention for him to have a deputy, someone that he could train and have a succession plan in place for that critical area of DPW. Our issue is, is that John is a supervisor of water systems operation. There was no assistant or deputy title for that. So we kept going around in circles. They have finally authorized us and they've created this position. And so they, now that, that we actually have the ability to create this new position of assistant supervisor of water systems, we would like to be able to post it and to ultimately hire somebody. It's, you know, not a tremendous financial differential for us between the great ones that are there right now, but it does allow a succession plan into place and it does allow us to take and train somebody. But the eventuality, the eventuality that at some point John Migliaccio is, is, you know, not going to be with us for the next hundred years, he's going to decide that he's got greener pastures and going to go ahead.
And Jill, I think, I'll just comment that I think that this title then allows this person to gain experience with management. So we, we've run into that before where while somebody might be doing the work, if they're not in a specific title, the county doesn't recognize that. And then when you go to promote, like Jill said, a succession plan for John Migliaccio, we then don't have anybody in-house that has the requisite experience because they were in a title that doesn't give them that.
Right. According to Westchester County Civil Service, we don't have anybody with the experience, even though the person may have been doing the job. So we sort of work, walk this tightrope with civil service. So we literally have been trying to get this position for four years. And they finally, you know, saw our point of view and conceded that we needed the position. So I'd like to ask the board to, for permission to take in a post so that we'd be able to, to hire finally. So that's the, the only resolution that's on for tonight that we hadn't talked about ahead of time. And we can take and do the resolutions now and then we can just hop back into executive session and just talk about the two other items that, that we skipped over. Okay. Anybody have the resolutions in front of them? Payment claims?
Right, payment of claims is, it's late addition.
What's the number? We just need to know the number, right? Oh dear.
I'll go to number two. I moved it off the work session, time or minutes from August 11, 2020.
Second, anyone?
Anyone? No one, is this such a controversial issue?
Second.
All in favor?
Number four, I move to retroactively authorize retention of the annual service agreement with Hatch Company for Millwood Water Treatment Plan Onsite Calibration. In fact, you recommended maintenance for the total requisition cost of $18,807.70.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the purchase of four replacement drag chains for the Peterson 4700 horizontal grinding machine from Barry Equipment in the amount of $6,160.44.
Second. All in favor?
I move to authorize the posting and hiring for the position of assistant supervisor of water system operations within the Department of Public Works with a salary range of $70,530.37 to $96,396.8 cents.
Second. All in favor?
I move to accept the resignation of Jason Valvano from the position of laborer within the Department of Recreation and Parks effective August 14th, 2020.
Second. All in favor?
I move to authorize the posting and hiring for the position of laborer within the Department of Recreation and Parks at a starting salary of $48,055.31, Group Two, Step One.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to hold.
We're going to hold that one. I move to authorize the refund of $1,000 deposit for a canceled event to One Day University slash WeWork.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to a juror?
No, 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 we, the payment of claims, please. It's an amount of.
Yeah, I have it here in front of me for me to read it. It was emailed out separately to the board. So I didn't need a council member move or just want me to give you the amount?
Yeah, the amount.
Sure. Okay, so the payment claims in the amount of $1,766,824.97.
With the date of, it would be tomorrow, September 2nd.
Let's see the, let's see detail, voucher detail report prepared on August 31st and will be issued and mailed September 2nd.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, all right, let's, don't mind indulging me. Let's go back into executive session and we'll just finish up these last two things.
No, to, we're going to executive session.
Oh, moved.
Rob, can you stick around for the waiver?
Advice of counsel and contracts and other stuff.
Personnel.
Second. Good, everybody.
Okay.